Hey Patty, I am my own favorite animal, I'm here.
All right, okay, so here we go. The, um, May 19th, 2020 Lincoln City Planning Commission meeting is called to order. James, could we have a roll call?
Marcy Baker?
Here.
Kim Blackerby?
Here.
Josh Brainerd?
Here.
Patty Crowen?
Here.
Lenny Nelson?
Yeah.
Miles Schlesinger?
Here.
Max Smith?
Here.
All right, welcome everyone. Um, any agenda changes or revisions, Anne Marie?
We do not have any changes or revisions tonight.
Great, okay. Um, the minutes from our regular meeting of May 5th were included in the packet. Um, well done, James. I, I understand the challenges involved in, in, um, pulling those together and on top of it being a virtual meeting. It was a long meeting, so, um, well done. I, I submitted a few just minor sort of grammatical corrections to James and I think you incorporated all of those. So, does, um, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll motion to accept the minutes from, uh, the May, whatever the date was, 5th Planning Commission meeting. Thank you.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. I have a, a motion and a couple of seconds, any discussion on the meeting minutes? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Hearing none, okay, minutes are accepted. Um, final orders, resolutions, and written communications. We have, um, wait a minute, I need to get to this. Actually, print it all just out. The first one is, um, FO 2020-04, this is the final order for the Devil's Lake Water Improvement District dredging. And, um, we were provided with the final order for CUP 2020-02 from the, uh, Water Improvement District last meeting. Um, I've, I have one question on this. Um, I didn't see, I know we had a discussion during the meeting about, uh, whether or not this, um, order would cover multiple dredging activities or whether, um, Josh and the Improvement District would have to come back to the Planning Commission if they want to do this again during the 10-year period. So, did that get resolved somehow, James?
I saw something in there about it.
It did, it's, it's part of the request. So, if you read, if you read the very beginning, it, it describes the request and, uh, notes that it's over a 10-year period.
So, will they need to come back to the Planning Commission?
No.
Okay, but they will need to go to the state and the feds for permits each time?
For whatever permits the states and the feds require.
Okay.
The city doesn't have, in other words, the city doesn't have any jurisdiction over whatever the states and the feds require.
Right, but there is a condition that they need to provide the permits and approvals from the states and fed before they can proceed. So, do they need to go through that hoop every time?
Only if the state and the feds require it. So, if they can get a 10-year permit from the state, then that's great. If not, then they'll have to get one from the state every time over the 10-year period.
Okay, Josh, when you applied, um, let's just, for example, take the Corps of Engineers. Was that a, a multi-dredging permit that you applied for with them?
It is, it's a, it, it shadows our current standing permit that we have on the west side, um, the west side of Highway 101 right now. So, we, uh, we renew that, that permit, I believe, every 10 years with them. Uh, and, and as, as Anne Marie said, it, it's, you know, it's, it's their regulatory approvals. We, we have contact information with, with DEQ, Army Corps of Engineers, um, and even ODFW on this project, um, given its location. So, they, they all get notification, um, it, it essentially is the same thing that we do on the other side of the bridge. We notify all those same people, um, and then also, uh, parks and rec, so.
Oh, perfect, okay. I just wanted to make sure you weren't going to get in some weird endless loop.
No, oh, oh Patty, we're already in the weird endless loop, we're in government.
All right, never mind.
But thank you.
Sure. So, um, do I have a motion to accept this final order, um, on the Devil's Lake dredging?
I'll, I'll move to approve final order 2020-04.
I'll, I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion on it? Okay, all, um, all in favor?
I think you should have a roll call because Josh shouldn't vote.
Well, Josh.
No, I can't vote. Legally.
He's already accused, we'll mute Josh.
There you go.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Josh, be quiet. All right. Okay, the next one is, um, this, the final order, uh, 2020-02 for CPA 2020-01, the Scruton Rezone. Um, and I did, um, I did provide one small edit to the final recommendation, um, because I, I wanted to make sure that, um, the, the reasoning that at least I was voting, um, in opposition of this recommendation was the inconsistency with the adopted comp plan. So, all I asked for was an addition to the number one underneath the, uh, reasons for opposition. It now reads, um, zoning for the entire city should be looked at comprehensively and revised accordingly rather than make piecemeal changes that are essentially spot zoning and inconsistent with the adopted comp plan. So, those are the words that were added, so, um, Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Baker, are you okay with that addition to the reason for not voting for it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, okay. So, do I have a motion to, um, recommend a rezone to the City Council?
I'll, uh, I'll make a motion that we, uh, recommend FR 2020-02.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion and a second, any discussion on it? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. That one's done. Okay, um, the next one is, um, 2020-01 and 2020-06, the Woods One Annex and Rezone. So, this is, um, the final order 2020-01, oh, I just said that, for annex and CPA zone changing, 2020-02 for the woods annexation and the comp plan map development, or amendment, excuse me, and zone change. Um, this one, again, I had a, a slight addition, um, under the opposition section. Um, I included, um, because I, I guess I wasn't particularly clear, um, in my, um, discussion several months, it seems like it was a year ago, but I know it wasn't. Um, that the, the problem I had with this was that it was rejected twice by both the Planning Commission and the City Council due to lack of a development agreement, or acceptable development agreement. So, I just added in a sentence that said, "Project was rejected twice due to the lack of an acceptable development agreement." So, that's been included in the, um, the reasons for the opposition to it. Anybody have an issue with that? Problem with that, okay.
No.
All right, do I have a motion to, um, forward this recommendation to the City Council? So moved, all right, do I have a second?
Second.
And this is just the, um, this is just the annexation, right? Okay. So, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's good. Now, we had, um, the zoning, and this was, um, changing the zoning from the county zoning to redesignate it, um, as... Wait, do I have this right, oh, wait, I missed one.
You were on the right track.
All right, this is CPA ZC 2020-02. And in this case, it was, um, to deny the request for rezoning. You know what happened, I've printed these front and back, and so I'm confusing myself by going just through single pages. Okay, so, this was the recommendation to deny the request for the zone change, which would require the property continue to be zoned under the county. Um, do I have a motion to send this recommendation of denial to the city council?
I move to send final recommendation 2020-06 on, to the City Council.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And that is, looking at page numbers now, 35 and 36. Okay, here's my agenda, just a minute, guys. There it is. Okay, design review standards. Um, this was to, um, send forward to the city our recommended, final recommendations on ZOA 2019-08 design standards. And, um, we did add a couple of things in the final recommendations. We did a, a couple of little edits, they weren't, um, terribly, um, huge other than adding, um, Sillets Bay and Devil's Lake to the view protection standards, um, deleting northerly and southerly so that both north-south and east-west streets are included, um, making some consistency in, um, ADA street width, um, clearances, correcting a definition, adding wireless communication facilities as a conditional use, and then a, a typo. So, do I have a motion to move this forward to the City Council? So moved. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That's that one. Okay. And then, moving the page over. Um, we had a final, or final recommendation on parking and landscaping. This one is... I have too many papers here. So, the parking and, um, landscaping is FR 2020-04 or ZOA 2020-02 Parking and Landscaping Ordinance Amendments. Do I have a motion to pass this one on to City Council?
So moved.
Right, do I have a second?
A second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. And the last, um, final order that we have is for permanent signs. And I think there were just a couple of cleanup, um, things on this sign ordinance. Um, nothing major, um, basically clarifying, uh, an area measurement for tenant space. So, this one is, uh, final order 2020-03, which is a final recommendation for ZOA 2020-04 Signs Ordinance Amendment. Do I have a motion?
I motion to pass the recommendation you just mentioned on to the City Council.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I know, we're, you know, it's a, it's like Groundhog's Day, we're just... All right, any discussion on this one? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, phew. I think that's all of them, right, Anne Marie?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Under, under, um, public hearings and deliberations, um, we have a, um, S, S U B P U D 2020-01, the Cove Phase 3. And I understand that the applicant has requested that this public hearing be continued to June 2nd at 6:00 PM, correct?
Correct, thank you Chair, there, there was one, uh, one document that they wanted to, uh, have in the record that they just weren't quite able to put together, and that, uh, related to traffic, traffic impact analysis, and so they requested the additional two weeks, uh, to get that to us.
Okay.
Just clarification, where is the Cove?
It's, uh, southeast 14th.
So, is that, is it up above the, um, the South Shell Station, back up in there?
Oh goodness, that is going to make me think.
On your way up the hill there, by the mall, it's just past, it's like kind of a, just before where you're, you turn left, you go into the Sandpiper Apartments. It's right before that, I think, on the right-hand side.
Yeah, it, yes, and that is correct, on, on the right-hand side. And it's not... It says the Cove Phase 3 for 40 lots, uh, Phase 1 and 2 are already platted, uh, but there's only six houses in it. So, it's not like a huge development in existence.
But they're expanding the footprint, essentially.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we'll look forward to that next month.
Mm-hmm.
So, I need a motion and a second to continue this hearing on S U B P U D 2020-01, the Cove at Lincoln City Phase 3 to Tuesday, June 2nd.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's moved on. And then, lastly, we have, um, ZOA 2020-01 Procedures. And, um, I believe this is not quite, um, baked yet either, correct?
Correct, and I apologize for that, Chair and Commissioners. I know that you were all greatly looking forward to a wonderful discussion on Type 1, 2, 3, and 4 Procedures. I have to wait for another two weeks.
All right.
I know, I know.
Is there anyone we can blame this on, or?
Well, actually, you can blame it on COVID, the pandemic.
That's a good one.
Yeah, we'll do that, all right.
And it's true, I, I just have to...
It's true, even.
Today, today I started to put together one paragraph. I started it at 8:00 in the morning to send as an email. And with all the phone calls received, um, uh, various people dealing with reopening, et cetera, I finished the one paragraph at 4:21 PM.
Nice.
That's indicative of what my days have been like, last two months.
That's like the ultimate writer's block.
It is.
Okay, so, um, do I have a motion and a second to continue this, uh, ZOA 2020-01 to June 2nd? So moved. All right, do I have a second? Okay, which do you want, Lenny?
I'll second it.
You and Miles are going to have to battle this one out or do Rochambeau or something.
No, 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 Miles, I'm going to go with Miles moving and Lenny seconding. All right, any discussion on this? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Okay. That takes us to... Any old business?
No old business.
Hmm, wow. Any new business?
No new business.
Oh Lord, now I'm excited.
Don't get too excited, we have to get past the Planning Commission Training idea first. Any Commission training?
I do not have anything scheduled for training tonight, but everyone should have the Dropbox link with all of the materials that, um, Richard wanted you to have.
Yeah, I...
And so I wanted to ask if anyone had any problems accessing that.
Okay.
I, I, the link works fine for me, so, thank you.
It, it worked for me as well, did anybody else give it a try?
They did, no problems.
Okay.
No problems here on my end.
Wonderful.
Lenny, did you?
I don't know what you're talking about, but if I have any problems, I'll let you know.
Okay.
You'll find an email that includes a link to access documents from Richard.
Okay.
Let us know if there's a problem.
Email came from David, right?
Pardon me?
The email came from David?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
Okay, reports and comments? Anything? Okay, future agenda items. I know we have a couple of things we just continued, anything else on the horizon?
Uh, what I, a long time ago, it seems like it's been a very long time ago, we were going to be working on the tree ordinance and having a, a work session, so...
Right.
Yes, that is still on the horizon. I'm hoping to have that, uh, for our second meeting in June. So, everyone can start putting on their thinking caps, uh, for discussion on what you'd like to see for revised tree standards for replacement protection, et cetera.
Okay, could, could you, um, could you send us a, um, an email that has the, the specific sections?
Yes.
That include tree ordinance information, so we all are looking at the appropriate sections? And are you, are you thinking, Anne Marie, that we'll have a work session at that Planning Commission meeting, the second one in June?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. I'd, I'd like the, the Commission's, um, thoughts and direction on, on how to proceed with, uh, revising that ordinance, I don't want to, uh, direct the whole thing myself. I have a few ideas, but, but I want to hear from you all.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm hopeful to have the information in advance, so that'd, that'd be appreciated.
Okay.
Anne Marie, do you have any idea at this point when we'll meet as an organization again and be able to carry on business more normally? But do you foresee this will be our activity, uh, forever?
Well, I don't, I don't think it's going to be forever. I know that right now, we're in Phase 1. Uh, we're working on, uh, Ken Murphy is the Emergency Preparedness Coordinator, as you all may or may not know, and he is working on reopening plan, uh, with Ron Chandler, the City Manager. And things are slowly starting to reopen. I would anticipate sometime in the month of June, uh, more employees will enter City Hall again. And I'm hopeful that maybe July, August-ish, we'll be back to normal meetings. But, you know, I, I can't say for sure, uh, Miles, because it all depends on all these, um, all these markers in all the different phases. And I'm not in charge of the reopening plan, but, but I, I do know that it will not, this, this will not be permanent. We won't be...
I, I'm curious because before, uh, you left, uh, the, uh, the Planning Director, Assistant Senior Planner, rather, had a proposal to go into, uh, the government for a, uh, start on, uh, a second roadway to connect, uh, the south end of town to West Devil's Lake Road. And it was a rough plan, and we asked for something like $6 million or something like that. Um, I think that the, uh, the county will, uh, come back eventually. And I am most interested in that, uh, roadway so that July, August, and September, the town isn't bottlenecked from, uh, traffic, which it is in, uh, those summer months. And I'm wondering how that sets on your agenda, uh, for this year or, uh, 2021, uh, to get moving on that again.
Well, it is not on my agenda for this year. Uh, this year was to get all these ordinance amendments done, get the tree ordinance revised, and get started on the comprehensive plan revision. The comprehensive plan revision, I'm not sure where that will go. Uh, part of the, part of the, uh, consulting services that I was getting used for public outreach, portions of that was cut, uh, due to, uh, the, um, due to the pandemic, because we have, uh, of course, all of our, our funds were reduced, lack of TRT, et cetera. So, once everything is back up and running normally, I will, uh, need to sit down with the City Manager and reassess where we are with all of these different goals. I would anticipate, uh, Miles, that if, if that is something important to you to, uh, perhaps chat with, I can certainly add it to my agenda. Uh, but many of the items on my work program come from City Council. And I know that that was not on the City Council's agenda. So, I would definitely need direction from the City Manager on how to proceed with that.
I, I would appreciate it if you would bring it up to room.
Okay.
I do know, uh, I'm a realist, and I know that there are plenty of things we've got to do prior to, uh, a road to, uh, connect the, uh, uh, city and have two roads, uh, so we can take off the pressure during the, uh, the tourist season. So, I will understand that, but I'd like it to be closer to the top than... So I will understand that, but I'd like it to be closer to the top than closer to the bottom, so when we get the, uh, uh, the, uh, economy back here and it's going relatively well, whether it's twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two, that we go ahead with our movement to, uh, get a second thoroughfare.
Okay.
Winding through the neighborhoods.
I have written that down on my list, so I will, uh, discuss that, uh, with the city manager in my next meeting with him.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I just have a curiosity about that, Miles, just because I wasn't sure what you were mentioning. Is that a road that connects to the West Devil's Lake Road, you said, or would it be East Devil's Lake?
It's East Devil's Lake Road, so that it will end up at the, uh, golf course, uh, at the north end, but it'll go all the way connecting to High School Boulevard and eventually down to Fifty First Street, southwest Fifty First Street. So we've got two coordinated, uh, areas, the one oh one, or winding through the neighborhoods, and East Devil's Lake Road to, uh, get to work, or get home from work.
I, I was, correct me if I'm wrong, Miles, was it not also included in the, um, the Nelscott Plan?
Uh, it's part of the Nelscott-
It is.
Uh, being the, part of the Nelscott Plan, which includes, uh, going west, uh, or east, rather, from one oh one up the hill there.
And I think it, it would require annexation of some county land.
Uh, that, that might be. I, uh, I kind of remember that it was a mixture of county and city properties.
Okay, alright.
And-
Keep it on the radar.
Yes, we will keep it on the radar. I've added it to my list, my radar list.
Okay.
Nice.
Anything else for, uh, for next meeting? Coming up?
Nope, I can't think of anything.
You're awesome, Anne Marie.
Yep, oh, thank you. Sounds like Josh has other things to do, too.
I've been to every corridor of Devil's Lake itself, and this is like my third Zoom meeting of the night on top of it, so.
Where'd you, where'd you- August. When you're getting ready to, you know, to mobilize those dredge, that dredge equipment in August, you're gonna, you're gonna have huge meetings.
Just tons of meetings.
Yeah.
Tons of meetings. It's, it's all I do. It's my life. And, and, and fishing sometimes.
Anne Marie, how is your, uh, house, uh, progressing? I saw you there, uh, walking around.
It's fine. We, we can talk about that after the meeting's over.
Okay, alright, well, I appreciate all of you participating in this, um, odd format. I, I would offer that the one very positive part of doing meetings like this, as opposed to sitting um, on a long table, is we can actually see each other's faces, which we can't really do when we're sitting, um, on the dais in the council chamber. Um, tha- thank you, David, for getting this up and running again for us, and I think with that, um-
Yay!
Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.